The regular monthly board meeting of the Ambridge Area School District Board of Directors on Tuesday, June 15, 2021 is now called to order. Please rise for the flag salute. This meeting is being recorded for district purposes. It is or may be published in part or in its entirety on the district's website without the express permission of meeting participants. Can I have a roll call, please? Mr. Angus?
Here.
Mr. Campalong?
Here.
Mrs. Curtis?
Here.
Mrs. Keigho?
Here.
Mrs. Maganello?
Here.
Mr. Metz?
Here.
Ms. Pedego?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Nine present. If you can have the sunshine law, please.
The Board of School Directors held an executive session on Tuesday, June 15th, to discuss personnel matters and matters subject to attorney-client privilege and other confidentiality laws.
Thank you. Do we have any correspondence this evening?
No correspondence.
Thank you. I have a motion to accept or correct the minutes of the May 12 meet and discuss voting meeting, May 12 non-voting meeting, May 19 board meeting. Thank you. Thank you. Can I, excuse me, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I have a motion to accept the treasurer's report dated May 2021. Thank you. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving forward to the amendments, addendums to the agenda, approval of agenda.
Yes, we have one amendment on the Personnel Section, item number 13, and that is for the boys varsity head coach for soccer, we need to fill in the name of David Cogler.
Yes, we do.
That's all, yeah.
How's that then? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving forward to recognition presentations this evening. Dr. Pascarella?
Yes, I'd like, I'd like to congratulate some additional retirees. Mr. Ron Gonzalez, a paraprofessional at the high school, his year. Let's give him a round of applause. And also Mr. Kenny Carlisle, custodian at Highland Elementary. If you could come on.
(audience cheering)
Mr. Kenny, you all, you gotta come up.
Come on.
You have a little something Mrs. Fisher's gonna, gonna give you here. Just a couple words, can you folks hear me out there? Okay?
Yeah.
I'll just talk loud. Here, you can take this. This is really loud. I'll just talk loud.
Okay, can you hear me? All right. I want to make sure we recognize Mr. Kenny from being somebody that's spent a lot of time at Highland throughout the years myself, and I know Mrs. Fisher has. There's always a smiling face welcoming the kids, always a guy who's willing to do anything and go above and beyond for our school and our community. You're gonna be greatly missed, and those shoes are really big to fill, almost impossible. So, Mr. Kenny, we wish you nothing but the best, and I personally want to thank you for everything that you've done for our school district and for our students and staff, and I wish you nothing but the best. Congratulations, Mr. Kenny.
I would personally like to add as well, I spent a lot of years over at Highland, 13 or 14 years, and one constant always over there was, was Mr. Kenny. I've seen him do a lot for kids, I've seen him reach into his pocket and give money. There is no replacing a man like Mr. Kenny, but we are blessed that he served as much time as he did here in the district, and it won't be the same at Highland without him. So, Kenny, thank you for everything you've done over the years and for being that smile every morning for those kids. We appreciate it.
I would next like to recognize and welcome our new Director of Business and Operations here after we move through the agenda, but if you'd please stand, Mr. Sam Gold. Mr. Campalong, I'll turn the microphone over to you.
Thank you. We would like to welcome the new varsity boys basketball coach. Welcome Coach Jalen Miller.
Coach, you want to come up to the microphone? You have anything you want to say a few words?
Hello, everybody. How you all doing today? First of all, just to correct you, Jalon.
Jalon?
Yep. First of all, I just want to say I'm very thankful and I feel privileged to be standing here today. At this moment, while I'm standing here, I represent my family, my wife, my hometown, and now the Ambridge community. I'm very proud to be here today. I'm very excited to make a change in every young man's life. I'm willing, ready, and able to do all that I can do to help these young men succeed on and off the basketball court. So, go Bridgers, let's go.
Thank you. Thank you, and I apologize for the mispronounced age. Please join us in congratulating the Ambridge High School Track and Field Student Athletes for finishing this season in the PIAA 3A State Championship. Bethany Non, eighth place. Valeria Young, 22nd place.
Get your pictures, girl. Congratulations.
Bethany will continue her running career at Robert Morris University, and Valeria will return to the Ambridge High School Track and Field Team as a senior next year. Congratulations, ladies.
Okay, Dr. Pascarella?
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna move on in the agenda here to talk a little bit about the pandemic coordinator reopening committee presentation. So, we're gonna go over a couple slides there, June, for the community and next steps as we start to look at our, our next school year and over the summer. Here's our committee. We're going to review, we're going to do a little review of our safety plan the committee met, as it says here on the first slide, on June 10th, and discuss the necessary steps that we need to review and have the board approve for the Pennsylvania Department of Education, ESSRS Health and Safety Plan Guidance and Template. So, June, if you want to move from there and pull up the template, if you can do that. And what, what we'll kind of do for the sake of time for the board, and if you have any questions, you, you could surely ask that. Let's go down a little bit to where you start to see the two columns, June. Keep going. Okay, right in there. You, you could see that we left some of the font in a different color, and those are the adaptations and changes that the committee made, in part because the rest of the items were things that the committee had made for the start of this school year that we would continue to implement. And being that we need to approve this now in order to apply for our ESSRS grants, we kind of left it a little bit open-ended. And a couple highlights, as far as changes goes, state that the Ambridge Area School District will follow all state and federal masking orders that are orders, but the Ambridge Area School District will review all recommendations with the Board of School Directors for their approval or disapproval. So, basically, what that's saying is if there's not a mandate or an order, the board will be deciding whether or not, you know, we would continue to mask based on, on recommendations. When possible, AASD will distance the students in accordance with all state and federal social distancing orders, and the Ambridge Area School District will review all recommendations with the Board of the School Directors for their approval or disapproval. What we're saying there is we know if there is an actual mandate or order that states how far the students will be, we will absolutely follow that, that mandate as issued. That being said, as we know, as we concluded this year, we did try to distance our students as far, as far apart as possible and feasible, and allowing them to have the opportunity to come back. You, you could go through and read that, many of these items have not changed, so if you want to scroll down a little bit, June, you'll see another comment about masking, and we said if mandated, and then you could continue to go down to be there. Again, establishing six feet of distance, we will do this in accordance with all orders. However, from there, as we already know from the direction from our board, that we will include the students and space them out as, as far as, as possible. You could continue to go down, June. And you will see in, in this one around hand washing and respiratory etiquette, it again mentions that the Ambridge Area School District will follow all federal and state mandates and orders, and other than that, the recommendations will come before the board to make the decisions on masking. D didn't change much because that's cleaning, and we're gonna continue to, to do a nice job cleaning. Our, our group has worked very hard on that. Ventilation, as you might recall, we met with Hockstein who continued to increase our ventilation throughout the year. E, you'll see one go down a little bit, June, thinking, a little more, there we go. New regulations allow for testing on day five, six, or seven, with a return on day eight or ta, or 10, excuse me, day quarantine without a test if you make it all the way to day 10. CDC still recommends 14-day quarantine, especially if individuals are not symptom-free. Mr. King and I had the opportunity to meet with an epidemiologist from the state who continues to give feedback, but no general rules have changed, so we will continue to follow this as it's set forth as far as quarantining goes. Obviously, if throughout the summer or into the fall, those rules or regulations would come down from CDC or the Department of Health in Pennsylvania and change as far as quarantining, we would abide by those rules. Go ahead, down, June. The diagnostic and screening testing, we will continue to follow all state and federal guidelines and comply with any orders. Currently, we, you know, obviously accept the comprehensive COVID testing and, and rapid testing here. Vaccinations to schools, this is something new that came out. What we are agreeing as, as recommended is that if we are aware, if the local community makes us aware of any vaccination clinics that are in our community, we would provide literature to the community. If we're given that, we would share that. H pretty much remain the same, and if you go down to I. And that basically just says that we will continue to follow all state and federal orders, and the Ambridge Area School District will review any recommendations with the Board of School Directors for their approval or disapproval, and we stay in, in constant communication with the folks from Rapid Response and the Health Department, as you know from the year. So, that's basically what needs to be in the plan at this given point. While we have this up, are there questions from the board on the plan?
Nothing.
So, we'll continue to update you as we get in.
Dr. Pascarella, what about the masking policy?
Well, yeah, that'll be next steps. So, yeah, just, so we'll continue to, to get information and share that as it comes avail, becomes available with all of you and with the community, but at this point, you know, our intent is, is to kind of pick up where we left off and bring any other recommendations and changes to the board unless they're mandated otherwise. So, June, if you want to go back and click the slot, yep, great, you're ahead of me, perfect. Go ahead and go one more slide there. So, the thing that the board would need to consider today and make a motion, in my opinion, I defer to the solicitor, would be the board would need to consider and take action on whether all employees, students, and visitors would still continue to have to wear masks after June 28, 2021, if not mandated or part of an order. So, what I, what I tried to frame there, and I defer to the board and the solicitor, is basically saying unless a mandate or an order comes out after the 28th of June, the question is would we continue locally to ask employees, visitors, students to mask, or would we be lifting the masking policy at that point? An email just as a piece of information did recently come out that, that indicated that the state would be lifting that mandate.
June, 28? Have any board feedback on? We would need a motion.
I would like to make a motion to take action on all employees, students, visitors would, thank you, would still continue to wear masks after, would not wear masks after June 28.
Yes, unless it's mandated by the state, basically after June 28, unless we get an order from, from the state or federal government, there would be no more masking for visitors, staff, employees, students, basically anybody.
Do I have a so moved? Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Young?
I apologize. Did you vote?
Motion carried. Moving forward to public comment regarding agenda items only. At this time, district residents may come forward to comment on agenda items only. Each person must state their first and last name and address prior to speaking. Each resident will be allowed three minutes and can speak only once. This period for public comment prior to the standing committee reports will be limited to one half hour. Although not required, board members desiring to address questions or concerns may do so after the resident's comments, questions, or at the conclusion of the committee reports. There will still be an opportunity for residents to comment on any business relevant to the Ambridge Area School District under old and new business at the end of the meeting. Committee reports, education and technology, Mrs. Maganello?
I move to adopt items one through seven.
Excuse me, Denise, I, Ms. Mag, no, I apologize. I, I moved forward without making sure there was no one that needed to speak. Anybody, anybody need to speak at all? Okay, my apologies. Moving forward to committee reports, Mrs. Maganello?
Thank you. I move to adopt items one through seven in education and technology.
A second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Have a roll call, please.
Mr. Angus?
Yes.
Mr. Campalong?
Yes.
Mrs. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Keigho?
Yes.
Mrs. Maganello?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Pedego?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Moving forward to finance and budget, Ms. Pedego?
Thank you, Mrs. President. This evening, I move for the adoption of items one through 10 under finance and budget, please.
Second. Thank you. You have a roll call, please.
Mr. Angus?
Yes.
Mr. Campalong?
Yes.
Mrs. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Keigho?
Yes.
Mrs. Maganello?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Pedego?
Except what was item number, was that, did you hear that?
Item number three.
Okay, thank you.
No. Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Moving forward to building and grounds, Mr. Angus?
Yes, I've moved for the adoption of item number one, I'll be building the grounds.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Metz. Roll call, please.
Mr. Angus?
Yes.
Mr. Campalong?
Yes.
Mrs. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Keigho?
Yes.
Mrs. Maganello?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Pedego?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Athletics, Mr. Campalong?
Nothing to report this time.
Thank you. Public relations, Mr. Metz?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Steering and rules, Mrs. Keigho?
Yes, I'd like to move for the adoption of item number one.
Thank you. Ms. Young, roll call, please.
Mr. Angus?
Yes.
Mr. Campalong?
Yes.
Mrs. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Keigho?
Yes.
Mrs. Maganello?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Pedego?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Legislative, Ms. Young?
Nothing to discuss this time.
Thank you. Salary, schedule, and labor relations, Mrs. Curtis?
I move for the adoption of item number one as presented for speaking.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Angus?
Yes.
Mr. Campalong?
Yes.
Mrs. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Keigho?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Pedego?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Personnel, Mr. Angus?
Yes, this evening, I motion for the adoption of items one through 13 as a mandate.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. The roll call, please.
Mr. Angus?
Yes.
Mr. Campalong?
Yes.
Mrs. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Keigho?
Yes.
Mrs. Maganello?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Pedego?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Moving forward to the solicitor's report, Ms. Campbell?
I have no access to items for the board's consideration, thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's report?
Just want to thank again our retiree, Mr. Kenny Carlisle, for all of his work, and I'd also like to thank the entire district, and I say that meaning everyone, parents, students, staff, board. It was a difficult year, but I'm very proud of the work that we, we did, and I'd just like to thank everybody for, for working with us and doing the best that we possibly could for our students. So, I appreciate everyone's hard work, and I hope everyone has an enjoyable summer.
Thank you, Dr. Pascarella. Old and new business. It is now time for old and new business. Any district resident who desires to comment on any business relevant to the Ambridge Area School District should now come forward. Each person must state their first and last name and address prior to speaking. Each person will be allowed three minutes and can speak only once.
Good evening, my name's Scott Setson-Fand, I'm a resident in Economy Borough. You may recognize me as a employee too, so thank you for that. Just to kind of follow up, I thought about talking during course selections, but I was the technology education teacher in middle school until yesterday, but that's okay. Still want to stress the importance of that technology education moving forward. I know there's a lot of change happening, I know there's some restructuring going on with the courses offered and whatnot, but technology education is really where kids learn to fail, all right? There are so much, you gotta do it the right way, you gotta do it the right way, and that's one of the few settings that we have in education where you can, you can take a chance and, and learn from your mistakes. Not that we can't do that elsewhere, especially in sports and anything else, but in, in that, those settings, especially the, the class that I had set up in the middle school too, it's that take a chance and learn from your, learn from your mistakes and grow and continue to grow. So, that's, I think that's the way of the future, and I know we can't unwind the past and change things, but moving forward, I always look to, look to be innovative and, and try and create those opportunities for our kids, especially with competition like Midland's innovation and technology school kind of knocking on the door too. We want to, we want to, we're, we're better than them, and we got to keep that going. I guess that was, that was it. Appeal for the technology education group, all right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Christina Briola, Ridge Road, Harmony Township. I'm also a teacher here at the high school. I just have a quick question, it's actually just for Mrs. Keigho, because you, you still serve as a board member at the BCTC, the VOTAC?
Yes.
Is there quite a bit of concern about the incoming charter school, VOTAC vocational school that's going to be built in Midland as part of the PA cyber conglomerate?
Yes, we, we have been discussing that for the last two years.
Okay, and that's going to open when?
Not this coming school year, the following school year.
Okay, so that'll be opening up shortly? So, in a year?
Correct.
And how much do we spend on charter schools in the district? Does anyone?
It's over $5 million.
Almost $6 million. $5.8, I believe? Dr. Pascarella?
Yes, at least that much.
$5 million?
Over $5.
$5 million, so that's, I'm trying to equate that to mils, $250,000 is about a mill of taxes here, correct?
More.
So, that's quite a bit of millage that's going out to charter schools.
So, I guess I have a question back. What are you as a teacher in our district doing to promote our district and support our students and promote what we're doing here?
Actually, as the private, the, the former cyber coordinator, I did contact students regularly to try to encourage them to come back, and some students did come back when I made those calls and directly spoke to them. I also do promote our district regularly.
I agree with you.
I'm just, I just want to know what the, the facts are, I do need to know about the, what, you know, how the VOTAC was handling that. I'm a big proponent of our vocation, our VOTAC school. Mrs. Keigho, you know that, I speak up about our VOTAC kids all the time. My father was a tradesman, my uncles are tradesmen, that's, so I, I'm a big proponent of that type of education. So, I just, just trying to clear that up, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Keigho, I think you can speak a little bit about the program, but I mean, I think we have a, we, we have a lot of success with the BCTC.
For, for many of you that may not know, we have the 14 school districts, we also have a couple private schools and Catholic schools that send students to Beaver County Career and Technology Center, which is a half a day program. They take either the morning or the afternoon session, and then they do their core subjects here. We have 17 programs there. We just had last month a lot of student recognition for the Beaver County Career and Technology Center here, and we've had some scholarships that came out of the CTC this year for Ambridge students. We actually had Zaire Ellis, who is in masonry. I can honestly say, I've sat on the CTC board for 14 years, I do spend a lot of time talking to the instructors over there. I have never had an instructor say how talented a student here is, and it's really impressive considering that they already had, the, the union had come in, and it was actually him and one other student from a different school district over there that offered them apprenticeships, and starting off at like $22 an hour. And like I said, I've never had an instructor sing the praises of a student, because he, every time I see him, he tells me, "You don't realize how talented that young man is." And I do have some pictures on my phone of, on a project that he actually designed and worked on over there. He built like a bridge. It's in the classroom, but they use the, it's not the concrete, it's the sand mixture to put the stone and stuff together. He cut like 95% of the stone himself, but if anybody would like to see it, I have it on my phone, and I, I do like to share that because like I said, he is really, really, really super talented. But we do have many, many students that go to the CTC that are extremely talented, that do really well, that go on to work in their fields and provide, you know, good living for themselves and their families. So, but yes. And I know, Ms. Briola, we do talk about that every now and then. Thank you.
And, Ms. Fisher, man.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I think the community and our teachers and everyone, that
I think the community and our teachers and everyone, that's where we need to be progressive as a district. This is where we as teachers and everyone need to start working together to come up with different courses, to look at what we're offering, to come with different ideas to us as a board, not being reactive, but being proactive stance to our students, to what we're looking at, and what can we do better as a community so our kids don't have to look for school choice? We have to be that way.
I will piggyback also on Mrs. Maganello's comments that, I say it a million times at the board meetings and I'll say it again and I'll keep saying it whether I'm on the board or not on the board, we have great children in this district that are successful. We are proud of our kids, charter school funds are high in our district, we will strive to work with the community. I hope you all as a community will join us in promoting the district and the success and positive that we look forward to even spending more time in the fall, Dr. Pescarella. One thing Dr. Pescarella was successful in when he was here several years ago was academically and testing, and we look forward to working towards that again as well. Do you have anything you want to add, Dr. Pescarella?
No, I agree, I mean, I think our students do, and we've seen that just recently, you know, listening to where our graduates are going, listening to the accomplishments that we recognized at the last few board meetings, we have exceptional students doing exceptional things, so I think you're correct in that. Excited to hopefully get back to what we know as some normalcy here and get ready to really plan and work really diligently to try to improve our district as a whole for all of our students involved, so excited at the opportunity. A lot of work ahead of us this summer, but it's exciting, we're ready to go. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pescarella.
Hello, Adriana Seifis, Ambridge PA. Since we're on the topic of improving the school, again, I would suggest can we get some diversity in our teachers, our main teachers, not the subs, not the whatever, but like our main teachers. This year specifically, if I can recount, we didn't have one main black teacher. Now, going into the next year, I believe that we may have one again, because we did have one when my daughter had her two years ago and then you guys moved her around, I believe you're going to bring her back, but since we're talking about improving the school, can I see a reflection of myself and for my children? I would really encourage you guys to do what you can to make sure we can get that. They do apply, you just have to hire them so that our kids can see they can be it too. And I think you guys, with the situation this year, you guys done a phenomenal job, I give you kudos credits, I love how you've been supporting the kids, bringing them up here to get awards and ceremonies and all that, I think that's great, we need to continue to do that, but let's do it with more people who look like me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay, I have a motion on the floor to adjourn. Is that Ms. Young? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Have a wonderful evening, if we don't see some of you, have a terrific summer.